He just had his hair cut recently.
Oh wow, look at that.
He's so old now, right?
Oh my god, adorable.
Glenn what?
We don't have Glenn's comments for the hearing.
You sent them to her and she responded to me.
Glenn, you can just review those with us, can't you?
I have them now, hold on. I usually count on her.
I have them, because she replied to me, she sent them to me.
Okay, so are you gonna make...
Yep, one second.
Okay, we're gonna start a couple of minutes late so that we have them in front of us.
Thank you.
Sorry for that disorganization.
How's the new job going?
Good, yeah, I like it, yeah.
Good.
It's a busy time, you know, but commencement coming up and just a lot of stuff, yeah. So, but hey, it's good, you know? I mean, like at Christmas time, I got, you know, so much time off, you know, it's just...
That's nice.
The academic schedule's pretty nice, you know, I mean...
That's great.
Yeah, you got, you know, times, you know, I'll be working, you know, six days, maybe even seven days, but, you know, it comes back to you.
Yeah, it's not constant.
You know, I mean, where I am, you know, they get disturbed, they get spring break, winter break, well, you know, so...
That's good.
I know, so it's going pretty well, thanks.
Good.
Yeah. But your job's still going pretty good?
Yeah.
Good.
Busy, but it kind of comes in waves sometimes. This week, our team has a huge deadline, so I should be working right now.
Right, yeah.
I worked until very late last night, but then once that goes out, it's backed off a little bit.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and if you need Katie again, I mean, I'd love for her to go do some more babysitting for you. I mean, again, only if you needed and wanted, you know, I mean, just...
Yeah, no, yeah, we... I would like that too. We, I don't know, we've been all...
No, I know, it's not easy, you know, I mean...
A lot of times, I gotta check with her if she still has the same work schedule, because like, a lot of the nights I meet her, I think, are when she's already working.
Well, right, I mean, she, right now, she's only really working Monday.
Oh, okay.
You know, so that, I mean, that's real, you know, and she works Sunday, you know?
I think she used to work Thursday, so that's...
No, I haven't been here last...
I think you're right, I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I've got one last night.
Yeah, I'm enjoying it though.
Right.
Right. Gotcha.
You were telling me the name.
And then, I'm on Thursday, it's still, why do I have so many...
All right, we'll get started.
Gotta keep them connected.
Yeah, I'd love to see him then bond more, I'd love to see Katie bond more with...
All right, everybody?
Sorry.
We'll open the meeting, and can somebody make a motion to bring an alternate up? Can you just take one?
Yeah, I make a motion to bring up Brian West.
Do we have, do we have a rotation?
Oh, we got a rotation, okay.
We had a rotation.
No, yeah, I think she was also the last one, wasn't she?
Okay. It wa, I think it was Kate, right? Last meeting?
All right, um, do we have a second?
Second.
All clear?
All right.
All right, so now we'll, you'll keep the rotation and we'll... Mark, do you want to come up though, too? Because we talked about last time, alternates can join us at the table.
Let's put down.
Yeah, we have space.
Come on up, Brian. Are you the second one of them?
What's that? Brian, you're, yeah, you're up. Okay.
Come on up, Mark.
Sorry? You can come, yeah, it looks like, there's a couple, maybe bigger, that looks like they got rid of the broken one. Uh, okay, we have the continuation of the site plan review application for Lambert and Sons on Route 125. And we have the applicant here. Is that something we can start requesting?
Yeah, I like electronics.
Yeah. We're just looking to see, did you guys send, um, any electronic, like PDFs that...
I believe all of them.
Sorry, this is all new, so we're, uh, we're learning. Sorry, thank you for your patience.
What do we call it first?
What, uh, what page is that?
Uh, that would be the site plan sheet four.
We have some folks who watch online, and it's just easier for people to see here, too, so we've been trying to do this to make it easier for everybody.
Do we need to invoke jurisdiction first?
This is a continuation.
Oh, yeah.
There are no paper copies available?
Um, no. We have them from...
Um, I can go look, these ones are new.
Unfortunately, I've not joined the technological age.
Yeah.
I have some smaller ones, I think, in my office.
I'm glad that's on there, the app must provide the final plans set in electronic format.
Ah, I think so.
But we can't open it.
It's standard. Sorry for the delays. Normally, we have big sheets, we're kind of...
You're in a transition period.
We're in a transition period, exactly. Um, but why don't you go ahead and get started?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Chris Tule, professional engineer with Freeman Peterson, here on behalf of Lambert and Sons, for the development at 267, 145 Street, for the network. Um, last time we were here, um, the, I believe it was in January, Nicole kept my office and presented the plans before the, before the board. Um, we have received comments from TEC, we received feedback from the board, we have comments from the Hampshire DOT, the Hampshire DTS from the alteration of terrain, um, there's plans, like I said, as part of the town's period of TC, of revising plans, taking all those comments and feedback. Um, we changed since January, including, uh, adding additional notes, some minor clarifications to the plans, um, changed the storm, uh, modifications to the stormwater report, uh, the traffic support along, along with minor planning and details of case. Um, a few other items that you discussed, uh, are some changes to the plans, um, that were not as part of the Jan, in January. Um, so we've added a freestanding sign located generally at this location here. Uh, we've had a fifteen-foot wide gravel forklift pathway, uh, which will allow Greg's current facility here to access down this pathway and ultimately get into his new building, uh, twelve houses, certainly, um, certainly my building there. Uh, we've removed the previously shown well, which is located generally here. Uh, this was originally a public water supply, um, in looking at the plans, um, they made the decision to remove that, uh, public water supply well, remove the formerly shown, uh, weapon impact that was located there, and each one of these will have a non-public water supply for each of the buildings. Since, uh, since the original plans, we've additionally received a letter from TEC on 4/11 responding to our previous letter dated March 29. In reviewing the current letter, uh, there's only the very few minor items that need some clarification.
Um, we need to acknowledge, uh, they, they acknowledged the need for the private wells that I just indicated.
Uh, they noted, uh, the HPT permit to be added, the permit number to be added for plans. Uh, we have the permit number, we're just waiting for the actual final paperwork from the Hampshire DOT. Uh, there's a comment to request more information, um, on the fire system, uh, which will be worked professional to design that system, uh, part of the line.
Can I, sorry, can I just pause for a sec, just to make sure everybody's got that? So, we're looking at the April 11th TEC letter, and he mentioned, um, the wells are...
So the one will be comment number two?
Number, okay.
Yep. Um, then comment number six talks about the HPT.
Okay.
Uh, comment number nine is the stormwater, but I'll get to that later on.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Great, yeah.
Comment number fifteen, uh, is talking about the system. Uh, comment number seventeen, uh, talks about construction detail for the gravel forklift area, which I talked about. Um, then there's some minor daily adjustments that are requested just behind the building, uh, the thousand script building here. And then to the stormwater, uh, the stormwater comment, uh, it is on page five, comment number four. It's basically, it says, please update the stormwater report and plans as necessary pending comments from the Hampshire DTS as part of the DOT, which obviously would, uh, we don't expect there to be many, if I can, many get any comments from alteration of terrain. Uh, we did submit back a few weeks ago, we're just waiting for our final feedback from... The traffic comments, uh, as you can see in the letter, everything's been addressed as part of the traffic comments. We do have Heather, um, helping my traffic, if you hear, answer any traffic related questions if they come up. Uh, as you know, um, the board previously approved the conditional use permit, the waivers, uh, we've already received various fair projects. So those four, five items I talked about are in the TEC memo, we're hoping the board would look at those as minor as well, and potentially create additional proof, might based on addressing the comments. If you have any questions?
And then we have Glenn's comments? He said you added the business sign, right?
Yep.
And they actually already have provided the building elevations, so number was, number, number seven is the strike third.
Okay. And then the fire protection?
Is it going to be done with the Cistern?
Yes, that, so the Cistern is generally located back here. Our firm does not design fires here, and so we're signing that out to a, a separate consultant. Um, obviously, uh, you know, that would be designed according to state and local regulations, pretty, pretty simple, straightforward. Uh, number nine talks about the impact of the endorsement block, uh, obviously that's, that's mine, we can add that to the plan. Number ten, uh, licensed lands are very standard, the plan set, that's fine, I'm not sure why it was not on there originally. Um, number eleven talks about the business sign, uh, that's already added. Uh, a note detailing the emergency key boxes, uh, so we'll, we'll work for five farm and obviously make sure that the Knox boxes are located in a place that's appropriate, based on their review. Um, note, note, uh, note number thirteen, so, and talking to Nicole, um, so it says, note number thirteen required note regarding tenancy changes must be added in site plan. I guess our, our question on that, or a pushback on that is, obviously, these are, you know, commercial, uh, commercial buildings, contracted buildings. Anybody that goes in there needs to be approved based on building permit and dealing with the, the local building, uh, building department. So, we're not really sure if it is really necessary to have to come back to the plan book if there is a new tenant going in there, because they'd have to be approved by the building department.
Yeah, it's, it's actually just an informational requirement, it's, it's not trying to indicate that the site plan would be required.
Okay.
It just, it just puts the owner on record that they have to tell us if there's a tenancy change in case the, it does require a site plan.
Okay.
So it really is just a note that says, there will be communication with the town when there are tenancy changes.
And that's separate from the building department?
Correct.
And would that just be a simple letter to the planning board?
That's, that's all it is, is a letter to the planning board.
But the comment was just more of an, a whole...
It's done during a planning board meeting and the, and the owner never comes.
Okay.
They never.
And, and that gives me no issue with that?
There was a que, TEC's question was about changes, potential changes in traffic, but if the use is the same...
Right, the, the...
Then there's, there's no change in use.
And typically, typically, it's just a informational thing we, we added into our file so that we know it was out there. On occasion, tenancy changes do something, something. That's the surprise we're trying to avoid.
Yep, okay.
Again, you know, it, it is a, you know, it's owned for certain uses, so if somebody who's not, restaurants not going to go in one of these buildings and, you know, um, which obviously has a high traffic demand and everything, but, um, again, we have no issue with that, adding that.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, note number fourteen talks about the building code, um, so we can add it up to the plan, that's, that's not a problem there. Um, a note on the fire department inspection, not a problem there, uh, either. I believe Nicole actually fell on, on this plan here, which obviously the board does not have, she's already added a few of those ones to the plans, so they are there, and we'll obviously provide additional copies of Mark Owen's private signature. Um, the comment she's required to show something parcel, all, all parcels to the two hundred feet, we'll just, we'll make sure that is on there as well. And then obviously the contact landing, like on form, which she obviously will apply that as well.
Have you talked to the fire department?
Um, I believe there has been some correspondence, but everything is, has not been finalized yet. Uh, but again, you know, for the Knox box, that's pretty standard, um, you know, wherever the fire department wants it, that's, that's where they're getting it.
Can I, may I ask a question? The forklift path, what is its distance from the closest wetland?
Um, so basically, so this, the forklift path is, is this line here. This dash line is the fifty-foot setback from the well, so you're forty-seven, forty-eight feet from the well. Essentially, it's, it's sort of midway between the well here and well here.
So it, so it does encroach in the buffer area?
It is, it is in the buffer, but there's already grading and, and disturbance within that buffer zone today. And, and as, as part of these design plans, obviously, we do have the wetland crossing that's normally through here, which obviously crushes through the buffer, crushes through the wetlands.
Yeah, the, the, the point I'm making is, um, we do allow, um, accessways within the buffer to, to wetlands, but only after a conditional use permit is granted. And we haven't granted a conditional use permit on that accessway.
Simply because you disturbed it when you shouldn't have doesn't justify you putting a loophole in it.
Well...
No, the disturbance that means is part of the balance.
Yeah, the disturbance is part of this plan.
Yeah.
Um, that, that forklift path is new.
Yeah.
Um, and it's not a difficult conditional use permit, but, but we do require it for accessways.
Yeah, um, if it just, if it means just shifting this forklift from two to three feet outside of that buffer, we have no issue doing that.
That is all that it would require.
We have no issue doing that.
But if it falls within the buffer, we have to go through the conditional use permit process.
Yeah, again, um, it's, it's a minor change, it's gonna shift up a couple of feet, it's not that many real to main either.
I love that answer. It seemed close to me.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and obviously, we could, uh, you know, we can make that change, uh, along with the, the other minor change that I talked about from the TEC memo. It's not gonna have any real impact on the overall development aside from not needing a CDP.
Do you have, um, comments or questions?
I, I, I guess my, my final comment would be, I, I know that we want to close out on this, but advising the board to approve when we haven't even seen a plan for the Cistern location or gotten a sign off from the fire department
That's fine.
is uncomfortable for me.
Yeah.
And I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm saying we continue it for two weeks, not a month, but that's, that's information that is newly evolved.
So this is our utility plan, on the utility plan, we are showing the location of the Cistern here. It just, it just needs to be sized, you know, so this might get smaller, it might get slightly larger, but that's, that's the general location that it...
And that, I, I absolutely appreciate that, um, but for us to give a final approval, I really do want to know what that size is. And I want to, and I want sign off from the fire department that they're completely comfortable with the way it's been sized. And I mean, I, I'm not trying to be difficult about this, because I know we've been in this process a long time, but it's a, it's a fairly important feature on the site plan, um, and one that we legitimately always ask the fire department to comment on, before we give the file.
I can't sway you otherwise.
Excuse me?
I can't sway your opinion.
I'm sorry, you really, you, I mean, you, feel free to sway the board, because I'm the one here that's not voting. So, you can absolutely, um, ask for that still. It just is really uncomfortable to me that we haven't seen the site plan with it on it and, and know that the size that we're seeing on the site plan is what the fire department has agreed to.
My, my general feeling, you guys can all, um, state your thoughts, is that when we do a conditional use or, um, approval, you know, you said there were some things that were, were simple, add a note, or, you know, figure out where the keys go, things like that. But when there's like, two steps after that that still have to be done, that gets a little harder, because then we're saying, this is conditioned upon you doing this plan, and then for somebody else to approve it, and then for us to look at it again, so that's my thought is...
I have one question. Is there supposed to be a reserve area for the septic?
Yes.
Did I miss it on the plan?
Could you indicate the location for the septic field?
So, the septic field here, not building, the septic field here, not building. Um, we, I don't believe we finalized the, um, the septic and spin the DTS, obviously, we have to do that. Right, supposed to be appropriately sized, I know for a house, it's like four K.
It's a, it's a four K septic reserve area that's required for each of those systems.
And it's supposed to be denoted on the plan. That just helps us in the future to know what, where that reserve area is and not to utilize that space for anything else.
So, if we're gonna continue, the motion's out now, any other, um...
When, when do you anticipate getting the driveway permit finalized?
So the driveway, so Heather, you talked about that, we do have the permit number, so they have issued it, we're just waiting for the actual full paperwork after the year.
Gotcha, okay.
That's all we need.
Super.
There was one small, for the record, Heather Martin, probably through and here, so, um, there was just one small change that we had to make to the plan, so most of the plans got updated, we split it into this DOT, and they're reviewing.
Gotcha.
So we, we have the permit number, they've given us that to put on the plan and everything, what we anticipated to be soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, Glenn covered it. We, we are very close. Yeah, but I do think it really takes two whole weeks.
Does somebody want to make a motion to continue?
Are you okay with continuing?
I mean, I don't really have a choice.
Are you okay?
Just want to check.
Got a question, are you? I, I would say, um, I'd probably be more comfortable with not doing two weeks, giving our outside consultant time to make sure that they size Cistern adequately, um, and then deal with the fire department. Should be pretty quick and easy than that, but I'd be more concerned with making sure that that is done, so everyone's comfortable.
So, May 16?
I make a motion, yeah, I can make a motion to, uh, continue this to May 16th hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
And honestly, there was a lot of discussion about the traffic impacts on this site, and I appreciate the degree to which your firm worked with our consulting firm. I know it was not a seamless, um, enterprise, but I appreciate the effort that everybody put into it.
I, I called it, to be sure that we weren't gonna, that we were giving them the exact, we didn't need a lot of that anymore, so...
Good.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, um, alternate appointment slips, do you, Billy, have an update or, like, do you want to give us an update?
Is that a question or a statement?
Could you please?
Give you an update on what?
On the, um, alternate appointments. Oh, okay, sorry, I thought we were doing the same thing we did last night. So we just need to sign this?
Yep.
Great, because I didn't know what, I mean, I knew all the words you were saying, but...
Do we all have to sign?
I think I need at least your signature.
Okay, well, that's fine, anybody else who wants to sign, then, I guess, yeah. All right. Jeff, do you want to sign? Okay. Kristen, do you have a full complement of alternates now? Uh, I don't...
Don't we have two, two more spots, I think?
I think so, yeah, I think we have two more spots. You got towards where it's open? Yeah. And then remaining open until Phil? Yes, we put a note on the, um, website a while back, it's probably still there, but maybe way down, but kind of listed different things. We're trying to do a little bit more education and bring different experts in to help us on things, but if we can get more people on board, more alternates who have experience with different things, that, that would be great, too. So, I can't remember exactly what we put on there, but like, Landy's planning and, um, we can bump, we can bump it up.
Are you, are you interested, Liz?
Possibly, since it's the only board that's not appointed by the select board, it's quite interesting.
And, and what we've been doing is, uh, tracking the, um, you know, who comes in each time, and then we just rotate through.
So I guess you...
Okay, uh, we have a mile art sign and a manifest sign, and, um, was there anybody here from the public who had another issue?
Well, I have a question in reference to the alternate point slips, why are we doing that?
I think we just had to sign them, it's not a, it's not, yeah, that's what I thought, too, it's like, we're making people feel bad.
They went for your, for your inference as well.
Um, I had a quick item to bring up, to, to bring up now. Doug and I have been working, I mean, you were on the email, but just to let the rest of the board know, um, we've invited Dave Walker from RPC to come speak to our board, and also intend to invite the select board to join if interested, um, to just give an overview of the ten-year plan project solicitation process. There's a deadline, an upcoming deadline for the town to submit project ideas, so we thought it would be better and more comprehensive coming from him versus us trying to repeat what we heard at other meetings. So he's, he's available to come to the May 16th meeting.
And, uh, in that, I was wondering, I, I haven't had an opportunity to email you, but, um, would there be a possibility, Kristen, you're gonna be here May 2nd?
Yes.
But we also have the housing.
We have Jen Brown coming in from RPC, and I think that's gonna take up a good chunk.
Okay.
It might be too much for one meeting.
Forget that, bud.
So I don't know the best, I guess, Letty is our liaison, if she could let the select board know that what's happening, and that, we encourage them.
They're officially invited?
Yeah.
Yep.
And obviously, everyone's invited.
I did mention that the other night.
You did, okay.
Would they be invited? I guess we would notice that then, just in case, because you'd want them to be able to ask, like, official select board questions.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for arranging that.
Uh, I, I'm sorry to backtrack a little bit, I have a question about the alternates. So, because my original understanding is that the alternate terms were three years. But if I'm not mistaken, I think on the planning board page on the website, it says one year, so I think there might be a disparity there that we need to fix. And, because at the conservation committee last week, there was also a little back and forth, some confusion about that, so I think some...
It wasn't the way it was designed.
I'm sorry?
When it was first designed...
When it was first designed, like when the planning board was first instituted, what they wanted to do was stagger, right?
Right.
Everybody voted in at once, and then everybody, you know what I mean, they, so they wanted to stagger that.
Right.
So obviously, when you want to do that, you'd have, right from the start, you'd have one year, and then like a two-year, two one-years, two two-years, and then that staggered into, you see, you see what I'm saying?
I see, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so the appointment of alternates is kind of interesting where it doesn't, they kind of stagger themselves.
Okay, that's helpful, I appreciate that, thank you, Mark.
Yes. Glenn could correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah. That, that is how they were instituted. The term itself is for three years.
So if that's wrong on the website, I'll, um.
We'll address that.
Yes, I can look at it, we also, Dan Marino was on the planning board for solid five minutes this week, so.
I, I, I get that a lot, if my, if my dad was a Dolphins fan, my brother and I both would be Dan Marino, probably.
Did you have?
I just, um, Mark had to be reappointed as an alternate because he was appointed as a full member. It was a question, it was a statement.
I think that already took place.
We did.
And we just need to fill out the paperwork, because I went to go get sworn in, and they said they had not received the paperwork, so you, you just, there you go with the right sticky sign.
Cause his fir, he's still technically within his first three-year term as an alternate, but you just started the clock again. Is that correct?
However you want to roll it, it doesn't really matter.
Sure.
So we supposed, we alternates all are supposed to know whether one, two, or three years?
You're all.
Yeah, that seems silly to me.
You're three, yeah.
I'm a three?
Right, they're all three.
They're all threes.
So, are you keeping track of when that clock's starting?
Is an alternate really gonna, you know?
You just sent out that form, right?
Yeah.
This doesn't seem.
So at the end of the three years, what happens?
It's a formality.
I mean, I'm sure some will, but I think overall, those.
Reappointment, oh, okay. It's a board function.
It needs to function that way, Solomon, on Arcaira, can, you know. It's just a formality.
Mm-hmm. And I have one more request. Um, I'd like to, uh, see if the board can, would, uh, consider Doug as my alternate for RPC, because I'm gonna be gone for a bit, and, um, when I am, I'd like, I'd like to make sure that the RPC gets filled. And Mark, were you aware of the fact that we have a meeting last?
In Portsmouth?
Yeah.
Yes, it was a transportation one in Portsmouth, and unfortunately, I could not attend.
Okay, all right, I, I just want to make sure you get me.
I'll second that for Doug.
Okay.
Does, does RPC recognize that, like, if there are votes, they recognize, like, we can tell them we have an alternate?
Yes, and they, I talked to, uh, Tim Roach about it the other day, because I wasn't quite sure, and he said, it's up to the town as to what they want to do. If they want to appoint an alternate, they can, if not, they don't have to, and I could just have somebody fill in, but I think it would be nice so we had another name and a communication, because somebody has got to communicate with the select board as well after we go, or we're supposed to, anyway.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
I think it's great, yep.
So.
Are you okay with it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Doug, you're making a motion?
Yes.
And, and is seconding it, and there any other discussion? All in favor of appointing Doug Marino, an alternate for the RPC?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And have, have there been other RPC meetings since the last time we met?
Yeah, and, uh, Steph just brought us up today, yeah.
I just wanted, it was a transportation orientated one, in Portland.
The last one?
Yes. The way I read it, I read it.
Well, actually, they reviewed, um, the ten-year plan, and they also reviewed what, your, your meeting you went to, and Doug went to, and I went to, they just reviewed, um, the priorities of the individuals we spoke to.
So it's not really focused on what they set the agenda as?
Um, not all the time, uh, I think, uh, when you see the names listed, that usually gives you a stronger indication of what's gonna be talked about. I, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't speak to it, but, um, everything that was on the agenda, I think they addressed the other day. Uh, the transportation part, I don't recall them, transportation was in reference to, um, the students trying to get down to the meeting.
I read the one, now, it was the meeting on enforcement, and I could have misread it, I'm not saying my memory is the best, but I thought it was focused on, like, uh, public, a transportation, like, public transportation, and things of that nature.
Yeah, um, I don't recall them addressing that, and you may be totally correct.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I, I attended, uh, the technical advisory committee meeting, um, we discussed the project solic, solicitation process that Dave's gonna come talk to us about, and we talked about, um, uh, stream crossing prioritization initiative the state is working on, how to prioritize stream crossing projects, basically. That don't really directly affect the town in the sense that nothing, the town doesn't have to do anything, it's more for DES. Um, we talked about, uh, RPC's working on a regional master plan, we, our committee gave them some feedback related to transportation, and there was a quick update, um, on the, there's a regional safety action plan that RPC is developing, and that will, you know, Brentwood's part of the, one of the communities that falls under the umbrella of that plan. But basically, there's a funding mechanism right now where, um, RPC is preparing this plan that covers the whole region, and once that's in place, then all of the communities in the region will be eligible for the next phase, which is implementation, and there'll be grant funds available, so Brentwood could, in theory, take advantage of that. So I'm sure there'll be public meetings that would be more descriptive than that, but that's a quick piece.
And you meet once a month, on Thursdays?
Yeah. Our meetings have pizza, so, they're at lunchtime.
Well, we had pizza this past.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's cold, though.
Oh.
Steph's leftovers.
Well, thank you all who have been involved in the RPC, because I, I feel like it's, um, Brentwood's getting its name in the conversation now, and maybe getting.
Yeah, I don't know if anything's gonna materialize.
It may take a while, but at least, you know, we're in the conversation, and.
I think I sent that email, the one that you're reading right now, about the water crossing, the stream crossing, did I send you that email? I never, I never forwarded it to you, I, I forwarded one of them to you.
I haven't done anything for me recently.
It's when I got that email, never mind, I'll try to forward them to you, I feel they're relevant.
Um, and then next meeting, we do have, um, Jen here to talk about the housing study, survey, um, draft reports, so, um.
And we're starting at six.
And we're starting at six.
Yeah, is that the joint meeting with the conservation?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the next meeting?
That, that happens at the seven o'clock hour.
Right.
Right.
To say, there's a lot going on, so she's gonna come at six and talk about the report, so, um, do, do what you can. I know I haven't gotten through it in detail yet, but you guys can spend some time with that before the next meeting. And then at the, our regularly scheduled time at seven, we're doing the joint meeting with conservation and food education, and anything else?
That's on the twenty, that's on the second, right?
It's on the second.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, um, did anybody have anything else? Yeah?
Other comment?
Sure, yeah.
Hi, I'm Debbie LaRocque, I have fifty-sixth call, I'm sorry, I have a, and some reference to the property, it's two to sixty-six, or what am I, hi? I know you're probably all aware that they have a lawsuit that needs to come right now, I just wanted to get some more vague information on what I am observing, being a buyer to the property. I do have video and Letty, I did bring the vice, I don't know whether maybe we can transfer to one of the PCs or not.
I can try.
Okay, and, um, the problem is, the situation right now is that he is also, he's not supposed to be doing any processing on the property. He's running rocks to a grizzly right now, and what that is, it's a piece of metal that's sorting the rocks, possibly dumping it in.
I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm going up, up, whatever the word is.
And then, yeah, the absence of a, a hearing, a notice, and all of that good stuff, we really can't talk about specific, especially given the dislocation.
This is to go to our attorney in reference to suit.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can say.
And, and the suit is instigated by the Board of Selectment, not the planning board. So if you're, if you're giving, if you, if the goal is to give information for the suit, it should go through the conduit of the Board of Select.
I did, I did do that, I did not know whether or not the planning board needed the video also as to what's going on at the location.
We, we don't really have any role at the moment in this.
I was.
We do have a select board representative here.
Yeah, I was told to provide it to Karen.
Correct, Karen is the administrative assistant to the.
And I could not physically do it myself, so I presented it to two of the select board people last night, and they accepted the video that I have on file, and went to our attorney. I'm just touching all bases here to make sure that that, that you folks know what's going on at location, and everybody is working together on it.
I absolutely appreciate that. The, the problem with talking about it in a public session is that there, we have no authority to do that with the planning board, because the, the action, if, if there was a site plan that we were considering, we wouldn't be able to do it unless there was another hearing that had been noticed for that discussion. But that information that you have provided to the Board of Selectment is wonderful, and exactly where it should be in the hands of right now.
Okay, so the other information that I just wanted to get, where I provided to you folks previously, you're not, would not be accepting?
Correct.
We don't have a role in it.
Okay, I, I wanted, how do I, I wanted to get the video from Karen also.
Uh, did, did John, did you get it to John last night?
Sure, I had, I.
If John has it, he'll get it to Karen.
Wait, okay, I just wanted to cover bases, make sure that he does have, I dropped it to him.
Uh, I mean, I texted him, he hasn't responded, but if you, or drop it to him, I think.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions, just questions? Okay, um, so we are going to go into a non-public session.
Do you wanna, do you wanna approve these minutes first?
Yeah, and this is the HOP grant.
Usually not, usually, frequently, non-public is at the end, so that everyone, all of these, friends can leave.
Um, does anybody want to make some motions for, we have March seventh to March twenty-first?
I make a motion for March twenty-first.
Uh, bu, bu, uh, bu, before we approve March twenty-first, I was just hoping that they could, it could be updated to reflect that I was there.
Oh, oh, that would be nice, because you're in them. Good catch.
That's all I got.
Also, page threes to the March twenty-first.
Yes, because I corrected it, because in those minutes, Doug was Marion instead of Marino.
Okay, but, okay, it'll be the second meeting.
The second page is the correct bit, and.
I got two of those too, yeah, I, I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not.
You got the jerk one too?
Yeah, I fixed that too.
Okay, any other?
I guess it's this one, with these Merinos on it.
Maybe some others? All right, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes on the twenty-first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have a motion for March seventh?
Yep, I may make a motion on March, for, uh, to approve the minutes of March seventh.
Second.
Any discussion, changes? Okay. All in favor?
Nope, go ahead.
All in favor?
I can't.
I.
For approving the minutes of March seventh?
I abstain too.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna abstain, just because it pre-dates my.
Okay, do we have enough voters? One, two, I guess we have four.
How many do we need?
We need, that's all you need.
Did you get that, though, it was four, the four people that did it? Okay, all right, that's minutes. Okay. Um, anything else before we go into non-public session?
I don't know, what is that?
Oh, that's the HOP grant.
Does that have to be done in public session? I didn't know, I.
Um. Do, you're gonna go?
I, I, I make a motion to go in and on public under, hold on. Ninety-one A three two E.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I am in favor.
Aye.
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 Sorry.
Hold on.
I will push the button on the microphone.
Yeah, good, good call.
Doug, you have the silver one.